It is five thirty P M on Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty five. I call this board workshop and special meeting of the Keysville Independent School District to order. We will have roll call. Don Lee Davis. Ryan Kufal. Martin Chapa.
Here.
Joseph Reese.
Here.
Okay. David Garcia.
Here.
Donna Salinas.
Here.
And I'm here, Checo Perez. That the record show that there's a quorum of board members present and that this meeting has been posted in accordance with government code, chapter five, five one, State of Texas Open Meetings Act. We move to the moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance and the Texas pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America.
The children of the world from which this stands, in a certain under uh indivisible will never take their justice for all.
On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the.
We need to put this state under the on the individualism.
For the record, Joseph Reese, Board President, is uh in the telemeeting via Zoom. Item number four, public participation. Do we have anyone that wishes to address the board, Mrs. Perez? Anyone that wishes to address the board?
Would you have anyone? Would the song of community, uh, call it a song?
Okay. Welcome, Ms. Ramos.
Hi. I don't need a mic this time. I hope you can all join me because it's David's birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, baby. Happy birthday to you. Woo. I gotta put my touch on it. You old great goat, you ain't what you used to be. You ain't what you used to be. You ain't what you used to be, you old great goat. You ain't what you used to be a long, long time ago.
Thank you, Ramos. That's gonna be hard to follow. Okay, we're in item number five. Keysville ISD Board of Trustees will conduct a workshop to discuss the following. Five A Board, I'm sorry, bond refunding resolution. Five B H M King Drainage Repairers Construction Update. Five C Health Insurance Terminal Liability Option. Five D Keysville ISD Trustee Election Day. And five E H M King Early College High School to effect. Let's start with five A's, bond refunding resolution, Dr. Pitts.
Thank you, Vice President Perez and Dr. Martinez and members of the board. The federal funds rate has decreased and and there is anticipation that the rates will be decreasing further in the future. What this means for us is that we might have a chance to refund our bonds at a lower interest rate in the future. Just as if you have a home and you're able to refinance it at a lower interest rate and you're going to save money on on principal and interest over time. It is the same thing with our bonds. So what uh we're gonna have a presentation by our financial advisor, Mr. Robert De Hidina, who's gonna talk about that. And and then we have our our bond counsel, Mr. Juana Aguilara as well too, who will talk about a resolution to give the board president and the superintendent the authority to enact the the resolution and when the conditions are ripe for bonds to be refunded. Uh, Mr. De Hidina, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Pitts, again. Uh, members of the board, Dr. Martinez and staff. For the record, Robert De Hidina with De Hidina Financial Consulting, the school district's financial advisor. And Mr. Juana Aguilara, Bond Counsel for the school district, is also here this evening. Now I'm gonna go over the plan of finance for the refunding bond. Uh, before I go over page two, we all know the refinancing. We're not looking to enter into any new debt to increase the I N S tax rate or add additional debt to the school district's name. Our goal is strictly to save money for the school district and the taxpayers. So as Dr. Pitts stated earlier. Thank you, sir. As Dr. Pitts stated earlier, Fed lowered interest rates last month, a few weeks ago, about mid-September, about a quarter of a basis point. Even though that happened, the market on the flip side went up about ten basis points. We all know in reading some of the articles and watching some of the news stations that there is pressure for the Federal Reserve System to lower interest rates probably two more times between now and the end of the year. So we could see a cut occurring in October and possibly December with a few more cuts early part of next year. So again, this page is just an indication of what the ten-year treasury note has kind of been our benchmark in the industry on what's happened this calendar year two thousand twenty-five. And again, on the far right-hand side with the dip, you see that the Federal Reserve System, if I can get this pointer to work, the Federal Reserve System lowered interest rates in between September and October, but the market went up about ten basis points after that. So we go to page three. This is pretty much where the refunding refinancing is using current market rates. We're considering refinancing two series that the district has outstanding. The unlimited tax refunding bond series two thousand fifteen and the two thousand sixteen, about seven million four outstanding principal. And on the bottom left hand side of the page, we have the projected annual savings. Uh, second column titled private debt service. That is currently right now of that seven point four million, principal and interest about eight point nine million. We were to refinance this debt. We'd go from roughly eight point nine million to about eight point six million, the refunding debt service column uh next to that. And the pointer's a little weak there. But the overall savings, the gross savings is about two hundred and eighty thousand. We would go from an interest rate of four percent to two point six five percent. Based on the interest rate, this seems, uh, you know, let's pull the trigger. That's a decent decrease in interest rates. But there's two things that Dr. Pitts, Dr. Martinez, myself and Juan will look at as we want to make sure that the net present value savings is twice as much as the financing cost. And right now, on the bottom right-hand side of the page three, we have MPV savings about two hundred and sixty-three thousand. The financing cost is about a hundred and eighty thousand. So we need the MPV savings to generate about a hundred thousand more savings for the school district, which means the true interest rate cost slightly above that two point six five, that interest rates needs to go down. So we will not move forward with the refunding until we meet two criterias. MPV savings twice as much as the cost of issuance, and we need to get the interest rate a little lower. So we ran another scenario on page four. Assuming interest rates drop about forty-five basis points. The savings, if you notice on the bottom right-hand side, MPV savings jumps up to about three hundred and seventy-two thousand. That's net. So that means it's twice as much as the cost of issuance. The interest rate on the prior page was two point six five percent. We're estimating about two point three five percent. And the percentage of savings uh at the bottom right corner is well over three percent. It's just below five at four point nine six. So this scenario, this item were to be approved by the board, I guess when the board gets into session at the board meeting and approves the parameters for the refunding for us to work together with staff to move forward with the financing, we need to make sure that we achieve the percentage savings and also the MPV savings generating twice as much. So the page before, we know what the current market is right now. The financing does not make any sense. Interest rates need to drop in order for us to move forward with this financing. So on page five, we put a timetable. Assuming the board were to approve this item this evening, uh, we would move forward with the preliminary official statement submitting P S F uh bond insurance application to T E A. We would have a rating and due diligence call November the third. And if the market, interest rates were to come down, market rates come down, we are estimating a pricing date on December the second and close the financing on December the thirtieth. And again, when we price the bonds on December the second, the interest rates are fixed, the payments are fixed, and we would be able to achieve the savings that the board would be considering uh here in a few items approving for us to move forward. And again, this, as Mr. Aguilara will come up here and discuss what the parameters resolution is, he'll let you know how long we have and what the document, the resolution entails. If there is any questions from the board members or staff or myself or Dr. Pitts.
You just him and I'll call up the bond counsel. So so in summary, this is different from a defection. So defection is where we are paying extra on our debt so that we can pay less interest and principal in the long run. We're paying extra every year on it. Whereas this, a bond refunding, is where we are refinancing at a lower interest rate. So two separate things. The conditions are not quite there where it makes it worthwhile because we have to consider the the amount of refinancing, kind of like the closing costs for for a home. And if you can't cover that and and get something in addition to that, it's not worth it. But we are moving in that direction. And again, since markets are volatile uh and there's not time to necessarily call a board meeting when market conditions are available, that's why we are requesting uh permission now. And then uh when market conditions are there, that we can pull the trigger. And I'll I'll let uh Mr. Aguilara to talk a little bit more about the resolution.
One quick question, Mr. De Hidina.
Yes, sir.
Does that mean that four percent is the highest rate you've ever funded?
Uh, see, that's the coupon, but it's on average, the highest rate you have, and it's a range of roughly just sly of four percent to as low as one point five four percent. So you have eight outstanding financings. Seven of them have been all refundings, where you've gone from a high rate to a low rate. And the last two that the school district refinanced was in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. And you went from a four percent, almost a five percent, down to one point five four and twenty and one point five five in two thousand twenty.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a question on the fee that you. The fee that you want, you're waiting on coming down, maybe just a hundred thousand?
A hundred and eighty thousand, more or less. That includes the attorney general, financial advisor, bond counsel, uh, the underwriters that are part of the team. Uh, they're the ones that are gonna sell the bonds for the school district and the verification agent, pain agent, uh, I said Texas Attorney General fee and the rating fee.
Is is that on par with what they normally charge or is that?
Yes, sir. We've had the same contract for almost twenty years with the school district. So that's pretty much on par. You'll have uh, it all depends and varies on how much you're refinancing. If the dollar amount, this is roughly seven million and change. So if it was four or five million, the fees would be a little less. If it was about ten million, the fees would be a little more. And that's clear across the board from the A G all the way down. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Juan Aguilara. I'm with the the firm of Iskami and Ponik. And we we've been representing the school districts since about the early two thousands. And as Robert mentioned, Mr. De Hidina mentioned, and uh, Dr. Pitts, this is a financing that the the district has considered in the past, and you've authorized this type of financing. And so what we have in place today, the order that that is, that was um, that was, that you're considering is a parameters order. And I know that Dr. Pitts mentioned, I'll dovetail what he's saying, the volatility of the of the market going up and down, and that's more Mr. De Hidina's expertise. But a the, we're waiting to see that the interest rates drop to a certain point to make it something that is something that you would consider at all. Because of the volatility, the government code uh has been uh, was amended and back uh several years ago to provide for school districts, cities, counties, governmental issuers that are gonna be doing a refinancing to adopt an order like this. We call it a a parameters order. And what we're doing is, as has already been mentioned, is if if it's the wishes of the board to adopt this order, you are now authorizing the, your financial advisor, bond attorneys, your staff, Dr. Pitts, to be able to look, to see and and bring you the best possible financing. Now, there are some parameters that need to be met. And that's what is, if the board allow, adopts this, the parameters for this financing are that, as as Mr. De Hidina has mentioned, but there is, there is a, you need to have a a minimum of a three percent savings. So if the um, if the savings is not there, and that's net of all the cost, net present value savings. So the the savings are are there, not there, then we cannot move forward with this financing. Another parameters that we have is that the financing cannot be more any, not more than fifteen million one hundred ninety-five thousand. Now, I know that we're not considering anything like that, but in consultation with Mr. De Hidina's firm, we've put in every single eligible maturity that is out there. So they will be looking at all the different maturities, and they may, they probably more than likely will be taking some maturities because some of them make sense to be refinanced, some of them do not. So that's, we we put in and gave you the maximum flexibility. And the last flex, the last parameters that we have in place is that the interest rate, and and I know Robert mentioned a a lot, much lower interest rate, but the the net effective interest rate may not be more than six percent. So we got all of these factors that need to be met in order for the financing to be able to 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 be completed. So uh, another thing is that by adopting this order, you're authorizing the board president or the superintendent of schools to be able to finalize the final uh, the final order. So Mr. De Hidina will be working with Dr. Pitts, with your superintendent, with staff. And when they feel like this is the maximum savings that the district can be able to go uh, realize, then they will come over and and make a recommendation. And at that time, either the board president, the superintendent will be able to then finalize this financing, if if it makes sense. This order is good for six months. And Robert and I have been fin, we've worked in in financing in in the past where the parameters are not met, then we cannot go forward within six months. That's what you're authorizing for six months. If after the six month and one day, the markets really come in and we can make a big savings, we need to come back to the board and uh and ask you for reauthorization and adopt an order similar to this one to allow us and give us sixty more, uh, I'm sorry, six months uh on on the uh, on the on the financing. So again, this is something that is uh, the board in Keysville ISD has has entertained and and adopted in the past. And this is uh, the 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 ability to be able to adopt the parameters order is something that the uh, the the state law provides, and it's something that a lot of issuers take advantage so they could be able to keep up with the volatility of the market. Are there any questions on the legal side?
Yes, sir. The actual resolution that's been presented that we'll be looking at later on this evening has the blanks in it, as we would expect it to have the blanks in it. But I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. Robert said an MPV savings to two times the finance cost is what we're looking at. There's one parameter. You said a minimum of three percent MPV savings, which probably would be meet the two times.
And I think, yeah, I I, if you don't, can't meet the three percent, I don't think you're gonna meet the other ones.
Right.
Yes, sir. If we do not meet the three percent, and we know right now, three percent won't cut it. That's just gonna be a floor. We know it needs to be closer to that four percent. So.
Then. I don't have a problem with the the authorization of the entire fifteen million one ninety-five or whatever in case there, you know, were some additional opportunities. But then you talked about the net effect being less than six percent.
That's the interest rate, right?
Yeah. If it's at six percent, this goes away.
I was gonna say, the question I had to you earlier is that our average portfolio is, or our portfolio is four or just shy of four.
Four percent and.
Six doesn't really fly in there. Now, here's the overarching question. How do we adopt this resolution with blanks in it and make sure that what we've discussed tonight is memorialized?
Well, by by adopting this resolution or this order, you're memorializing and it's it's fixed, can't be changed. And the interest rate, as Robert will come and explain that to you, is the, is if the net effective interest rate is, goes up, you know, more at six percent or so, we're not gonna be able to meet the savings. So they both kind of work together in order to, six percent is the ceiling, but it it it's gonna have to be a lot less than that in order to meet the three percent. So what what we're doing is by, what you're doing considering is by adopting this order, you're you're establishing ceilings and minimums so that that way you're giving direction to the board president and the superintendent as to what the intent is.
I have no problem with it. I have no problem with what's been presented to me. I'm just wondering, a quick glance through that resolution, I'm not sure those parameters are established in there.
Like, like, where does it say three percent?
It's on page two. If you go to page two, the second page. On page two, at the bottom of section one, it says it's authorized by section twelve oh seven. And in there, you'll see at the very bottom of the page, fifteen million one ninety-five. So the bond shall be issued in a principal amount not to exceed fifteen million one ninety-five. Again, those are all the eligible maturities, and so that's not gonna happen.
Everything that you outlined is in there.
Yes, go to go to.
Two, the top of three.
Yeah, top of three, right.
The only thing that's not, it's it's not referenced is that two times the finance cost, but that's just a target that we're shooting.
And, yeah, and the government code says that you can establish a minimum interest, uh, uh, a maximum interest rate, net effective interest rate, and a minimum net present value savings. And and that's what the law, and that's what we put in here. However, the three, what Robert is telling you, and he's the one that's gonna be driven the driving on this thing, he is the one that's looking at this, at the savings overall. But Robert, if again, if we don't meet the three percent, we're not gonna be able to come with what you're saying, right?
Right. Even if we meet three percent, we still wouldn't pull the trigger because the savings would not be twice as much as the cost of issuance. Absolutely. It it won't happen. And we've, we've been with consultants, I mean, with other clients to where the savings was right there, three percent. But then when we actually looked to price the bonds, two point nine zero percent. We didn't price. We didn't meet it.
You guys have, over the years, saved an awful lot of money doing this, an awful lot of money. And and I appreciate it, and I trust it. I trust you both. Please drive safely.
Absolutely, sir.
We believe it's a little outside the resolution. Yeah, I trust you. I appreciate the work.
And keep in mind, what you're, what you're adopting today, if you choose to do so, is you're given the authorization to consider. And you get, you set parameters. Dr. Pitts and and your superintendent are gonna be the ones that are gonna come in and say, no, that's not, that's not good enough. That that's good. And Robert does a very good job to make sure that the savings are gonna be there. So we're just setting again, the law says, sets parameters. So we're setting a maximum interest rate, which if it goes all the way to six percent, the, we're not gonna, it's not gonna happen. And we're also saying a minimum of three percent net present value saving, a net off all costs and expenses. If we can't meet that, then it's not gonna happen. And and again, we hope that it it, we can be able to get some savings to the district, but if we really know have no control over that, that's the markets that have control over that. But again, this is good for six months, it's not forever. If it doesn't work in six months, and Robert and I have done this in the past, we have to come back all the way back because then the markets change seven months from now. And now it's done, but we'll come back, hopefully not, hopefully can get done and get you some savings now.
So this item will be voted on in the special meeting after the workshop.
Robert?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Okay, the next item is five B, H M King Drainage Repairers Construction Update. Dr. Pitts.
Thank you. Mr. Bynington is here from A G C M. They are project managers. They are going to give an update on the drainage repair project, the high school. Um, and then we will talk about any potential change orders that are needed as well.
Good evening, board and. Good evening. My name is Amos Bynton. Uh, we are hired, uh, I work for A G C M. We are hired to manage this project and um, I've been here a few times giving some updates. Now it's uh, uh, an update that I think is more pleasant than the last update that we gave. Um, but I wanna recap. So again, at very high level, um, the the goal here was to prevent the rainwater from going underneath the building and protect that, protect the building and the and the community's interests in in this building. Um, that it was a a long process, uh, and we're down at the very bottom, still in construction. This is uh, this, when we, when the contractor was hired, this was a spreadsheet uh or some numbers that I was sharing with you guys. And I put it in here just for reference purposes, I'm not gonna spend time on it, I'm gonna go to the next sheet. I actually broke this down into two sheets. Um, so on this first sheet, there was soft costs. This next slide is about soft costs. Nothing has changed here, uh, with the exception of, um, I I highlighted the things that have changed since the last time we talked. Um, there is a material testing allowance. Um, it's fifteen grand. Uh, we still have a balance of a little over five grand, and that, I don't think we're gonna spend much more of that. Um, maybe one or two more tests, and then after that, the balance comes back to history. I I wanna take a quick um moment to look at this photograph, and I'm actually gonna go back. go back and look at this photograph. When I spent this slide show together, it's the same slide that I've shown you in the past, but that's about a foot, a little over a foot of water underneath that entire high school, and I was remembering how horrible that is. And during construction, this was a photograph that was taken during construction, it was on the backside. This is not a super heavy rain, but that's the amount of water that comes from one roof drain. And I was just thinking, all of that is no longer going underneath the building, and I think that is just a victory in itself. This is the, this is the hard costs. And again, I highlighted everything, everything in yellow are the things that changed since the last time we talked. Up at the top, there was an alternate in this bid to do insulation. It was outside of our budget, and it was something that we could do at a later date, and so there's a zero there. I do want to say that we have seen some condensation on the bottom side of the slab, and I bring it up only that it would, we probably shouldn't forget that there is some insulation that probably needs to go back at some point in time. I'm jumping down to, last time we talked, we talked about a change order one and a change order two, and they were all coming out of the fifty thousand dollar contingency, so they were all needed reasonable, and they're all coming out of the fifty thousand and it wasn't going to affect the bottom dollar. Since then, there are four proposed change orders. These are approximate dollars, and they will become more concrete as we get more better cost estimates. But one is a six thousand dollar proposed change order number three, which has to do with some plants that are back on the backside of the building next to the mechanical yard. That is something that we can lower that or actually not do any plants at all, but that is, I guess, that's six thousand dollar placeholder for some plants on the backside. There's a three thousand dollar proposed change order number four for some splash blocks, and actually, I'll say that it's for this right here. When we realized how far that water is overshooting that new most drip, that concrete most drip, we felt like there needs to be some rocks that will be put down in a border that will take the energy of that water and keep it from washing any dirt away. And so that's what that three thousand dollars is on this page. There's a ten thousand dollar placeholder. We were asked about the, as the roof drains come down, I don't have a picture of it, but as the roof drains come down inside the building, they come out of the building. That is on the backside, and on the front side, there's PVC pipe that comes out of the wall and goes down underground. We've been asked to see if there was some cosmetic way of changing the way that looks, and that ten thousand dollars I'm talking about is a place where, as we look at options of, of, of cosmetically looking at the PVC pipe. There's a two hundred dollars, there's a manhole that needs to be raised, and it's just a matter of some rings that get added to the top, and that's about two hundred dollars. I want to go over to the, I'm going to go back up here for a second to the under slab drainage alternate that was taken, it's thirty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars. As we do, as we're understanding more information about the slopes of the soils underneath the building as they go to drainage inlets, we're realizing that in the Chrismer report carrying the lawsuit, those drain inlets probably don't need to be lowered, and so there may be some cost savings in that thirty-nine thousand, probably about half of that. So I just want to keep that bring up to your attention, as that gets developed more, I'll be able to report on that. I want to move to the other side. In the base bid, it included three allowances. There was a demo insulate, an insulation demolition allowance of twenty-four thousand. There was a sixteen thousand dollar pipe hanger allowance, and of course, there was the fifty thousand dollar contingency allowance. It does look as if we're going to go over on the insulation demo allowance. We had twenty-four thousand slated, the total cost of work is thirty-one thousand, and that is, that is determined by the amount of insulation that was left underneath the slab that hasn't fallen down, which was not truly known at the time, so we asked for a unit cost. That unit cost was seventy-five cents of a square foot. And as we went down there, we realized there's about seventy percent of it left that needs to be removed, and the cost of the work's going to be about thirty-one thousand. That means that we're over on that, about seventeen thousand. But I'm going to show it's not, it's going to come out of the fifty thousand dollar contingency, and we're not going to be asking for any additional money in the long run. In fact, as I go down to the sixteen thousand pipe hanger allowance, we think that's a similar kind of allowance with unit costs. We weren't truly, didn't truly have an understanding of how many pipe hangers that needed to be replaced, and so as now we know, we think there's going to be about twelve thousand dollars, we're going to have an extra four thousand dollars in that location. And so now I'm going to jump down to the fifty thousand dollar contingency, the sum of all the change orders, the one through six is thirty-four thousand, giving, leaving us fifteen thousand in excess, which will absorb the seventeen thousand for the insulation minus the four thousand for the pipe hangers. And let's not forget that we think that the thirty-nine thousand under slab drainage alternate will get reduced as well. So we're going to come in well within the budget. Now, I wanted to share that one. This is a good time for questions, if there's any questions.
Can you go back to that picture?
Sure.
Okay. 下一个question. We've got three spouts, one straight one, one's four, and you have to fill in on the other.
Okay, great question. So some of that roof is a pitched roof, and so it all collects in a gutter and downspout situation, and so that's what the square is on the left. That's a downspout that collects rainwater from the pitched roof. The rest of the roof is a flat roof, and so it all goes to internal roof drains in the building and comes out the side. That one to the right is an overflow drain, so if the one in the middle doesn't work, it's got an overflow, and it should never have any water if it's working, if, if everything's working correctly, there should never be water coming in, out of the overflow.
On the overflow rocks, they're going to place, they will be secured for it. Or you can't, I mean, are they going to be able to be moved around or picked around or picked up?
We were going to put a similar border that we'd used in the landscaping in the front, and then put the blocks, they'll be, they'll be about six inches big, and they'll just be piled in there so that they have an edge for non-maintenance and stuff like that, but it'll absorb all the energy from that water.
Okay, I know it's going to absorb energy, but I can just go pick one up on?
You could. Yes, that's correct. And there's rocks in the front too, so, and these actually will be bigger than ones in front.
Thank you.
So, let me go to the next. Oops. Okay. Okay, so I was going to go over a little bit of quality control, just for y'all's information, and I'll go through this fairly quickly. So construction quality control, some of the quality control measures that we've been doing, there has been two letters of non-conformance that were issued to the contractor. One was not admitting, hitting their milestones, and at that point, we started monitoring their, every day, they had to send us their daily goals for the next day, actually for the next five days, but they updated it for the very next day, we needed to know their manpower, and then at the end of the day, we would track it to see, did you accomplish what you set out to do, and did you have the right kind of manpower? The second letter of non-conformance was, they actually missed their contractual substantial completion date. Liquidated damages became into effect, and I didn't mention that earlier, but in the end, they'll probably be around a little over eight thousand dollars worth of liquidated damages. There is a deficiency log that we've been tracking, and as a result of that, they staffed the project in a different way, and they, we've seen a lot of positive results as a result of them staffing the project in a better way.
Because they missed their deadline, we're receiving how much back for that?
It's two hundred dollars a calendar day, and in the end, it'll be about eight thousand Currently, there's about twenty-seven items, and some of them are collective issues on that deficiency log. Many of them have been corrected, and I'll show you some examples in a minute. One of the bigger items was a trench drain rework. I had to redo the trench drains at the entrances of the building. And forthcoming will be a punch list that will be, that will happen at the time of the inspection of substantial completion. Okay, this, oops. One more, okay. Here we are. These are some pictures of kind of the quality control measures I was talking about. There are several pictures there of trench drains that go across the fronts of the building. They were, in the top left, they were just not put in straight, level, in an ADA compliant fashion, so they had to cut them out and put them back in. The top right, there was a, there's a guy there, he's reworking a box that was put in in the wrong location and at the wrong height, so they had to replace that with a new box. Again, there's several of these, these were just some of the bigger ones that aren't bringing to your attention. This is the schedule. It's, this is the same schedule, I'll show you at half time. This is the new schedule. As of, as of earlier today, these are really the last three weeks, and the last week from the October twentieth through the twenty-fourth is punch list items. So assuming they don't need to spend too much time on punch list items, which that's kind of our goal of the deficiency logs, try to keep them fixing things before the end of the project, they may not need to work too much on that, on that last week. But the, in general, they should finish around the seventeenth. It's about a week more than what we were projecting. The kind of activities that are still left has a lot to do with the stuff underneath the building, the insulation and the pipe hangers.
Who's involved in that punch list? You, it's?
So it is, it is y'all's option. We're obviously going to be there, and if y'all want to participate, then y'all are there, and so that's... Typically, you guys have somebody at the table.
Do you know who that's going to be?
That will be myself and somebody from maintenance.
Maybe one of the leads or the...
Yes, right. They can make sure that they walk them around, but they're the ones that be active, so they're going to be on stand as well.
So each one of you is going to have a punch list, it's not going to just be my person with a punch list, it's going to be...
So there's been different ways of doing it, but the way I see this happening is, it'll be a group of people that walk around together and look at everything and generate a punch list together as a group.
So you'll have one punch list?
Yes.
But are you going to sign off initially? All right.
Any questions about the schedule? Okay. These are just some progress photos, just, these are, these are recent photos, just kind of, you know, there's some concrete being poured and some, you know, reworking some of the grades and so forth. This is, again, at the bottom, we're starting to see the finished product. Again, these are more finished products, they just put down a lot of the soil, the sod over the last few days. And that's, if there's any questions, let me know.
I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Number one, the funding for this was through the settlement that we had, so the funding completely covers that, and there, depending on, there may be one to two hundred thousand dollars left over that we can use for other projects around the high school, and there are several, for sure. And then we did have, in the, in the special board meeting, we did have an item to approve additional change orders. That was just in case it went over the fifty thousand. We didn't know at the time, but since then, we do have the amounts of the change orders, so we're not going to need that item for additional approval when we get to the special meeting today, because it's already within the contingencies that were in the contract. Any questions for myself or for our project manager?
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next item. Five C, health insurance, terminal liability, liability option. Mr. or Dr. Pitts?
Thank you very much. So whenever you are moving from one health insurance vendor to another, there is something called terminal liability. So there are going to be claims that were incurred before December the thirty-first but are not processed and paid until after December the thirty-first. So like, for instance, let's say that someone had a catastrophic issue on December the twenty-fifth. There is no way that that claim is going to be processed and paid before our insurance ends on December the first. So we have an option to get terminal liability with the previous vendor. So what that will do is, they will help us process and pay them, and furthermore, if that claim pushes the individual stop loss over two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in January or February or March, then the stop loss will still be in coverage. So it's like a continuation also of the stop loss policy as well going into the new year. But again, there is a cost to it. The estimated cost, it depends on how many people we have on the policy at the time in December, but the estimated cost is a hundred forty-one thousand dollars, which gives us about six minutes of terminal liability. And let me invite Erica Scrumusa over to talk a little bit more about it. He is, she is from Phil Escaville and Associates.
So basically, what Dr. Pitts said is correct. You have the option to purchase it through Aetna. You can also have the option to purchase it with your new carrier, so you can have a run out, you can have a run in. I would recommend pricing it out and seeing what the best price would be, would be, but I don't...
So we have spoken with the new company, and he has said that it will be much more cost effective to do it with the previous company.
So for four months, we calculated your maximum exposure. If you want to go ahead. Okay, so four months, we calculated the maximum exposure to be about one point three three million. That's like worst case scenario, and at six months, about one point nine nine million, so about two. But again, the fee is, they're charging you, we found one oh seven forty-one is going to be like the rate that they're going to charge you no matter what, your fixed cost. So one oh seven forty-one times the number of members that are on the plan, you're looking for a four-month run out of about a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and twenty-five thousand. That doesn't include the claims, that you have to pay the claims. So, I mean, we really need to see more information, honestly, to be able to give a more firm number, and that would be things like, has anybody already met the individual stop loss at the end of, when we're getting closer to this term? Have they met the aggregated stop loss? And then we would need an updated claims report to kind of see what the claims are looking like, trending like at that time. So this is kind of looking far out in advance to give you a firm number, but... So this is kind of looking far out in advance to give you a firm number, but as far as your options, that's kind of what they're looking for.
So to reiterate, we are self-funded right now, we are moving to fully funded. However, there are still going to be some claims that are incurred before December the 31st that we are still on the hook for, because we are really self-funded for whatever happens to December the 31st. So as Erica was saying, that we pay close to, we have the option to pay close to $140,000 to $150,000 for what could be, at worst, $1.9 million of extra claims that we could be on the hook for. So it is quite a sizable amount of money to pay, but again, the risk is quite a bit more than that. Any questions? We're not voting on this today. We do need to let them know 30 days in advance, so by the end of November, we need to make a decision, but we just wanted to start bringing it to you now. This is the first time. We'll probably also bring it in the November workshop, and they make a decision by the November meeting of whether we are going to purchase this terminal liability coverage.
Suppose somebody has an accident mid-December, and it leads to complication after complication after complication. How do you divide? I mean, if the person would be covered under the new policy, or anything happening after that, but is the new policy older going to claim all these evils came from this old?
No. So basically, they'll pick up any claims beginning January 1st, but anything incurred before that will go to your TLO, to your run out, if it hasn't been filed by then. The average time to process a claim is about 60 days. So that's why you need a coverage like this, so that if you have anybody who's, or claims that haven't been filed, doctors haven't submitted them, it takes a while for all of that, it's going to cover up until December 31st. So there's no lasers on anybody. This fully funded plan is going to accept everybody the way they are, starting January 1st, and all the claims that come with them. So, don't know if that answered the question.
So to make sure I understand you correctly, is ESC, was it 100?
Yes.
Is that still looking like the front runner? Is that what I understand?
Yes, yes, sir. And that is the one where, when we brought the bids to the board, that was sizably less expensive than the others. So that is, again, the one that the board has approved, but what we're talking about here is kind of the, I guess, the stopgap between one and the other, to make sure that any claims that are carried over, that we are covered when we're moving from self-funded into fully funded.
And the closer it gets, it would be a good idea for us to come and bring all the numbers, so y'all can see everything, really understand it. We can look at the claims, the pending claims that we have, if we have something ongoing, like you said, which most groups do, and so that way we can do a good analysis of everything. But this is just to kind of make y'all aware that it's going to come, and that's all self-funded plans, you have to have a run out.
So again, timeline, we'll bring some more accurate numbers as we come to the November workshop. We do need to make a decision by the November board meeting whether we're going to purchase this terminal liability coverage or not.
Thank you. Thank you, Erica. Okay, item 5D, Kingsville ISD Trustee Election Day, Dr. Pitts?
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. So we have brought this before. Again, the board does have the option up until December the 31st to change the trustee election date for the district. We are able to change it from May, which we currently have it in even years, but the legislation only gives us the option to change it to November in odd years. So if we decided to do that, then the next election would be November of 2027. Anybody that is up for reelection in May of 2026 would now be up for election in November of '27. Anybody that is up for election in May of 2028 would be up for election in November of 2029. I'll open it up for any discussion and questions.
I think the legislature made a mistake, and I think they're going to correct that mistake, because I think you're going to have a lot of people scream. It makes absolutely no sense to have a uniform election in odd number of years. State, the federal, it's all done in even number of years. The only thing that comes up in November of odd number of years is if the legislature creates some constitutional amendment, like they had this year, and they have in the past couple of sessions, and they may, but at some point, constitutional amendments are going to have to stop. So we would be the only ones out there on an odd number of year having an election, which we're not authorized to do. We've got a legal, we're between a rock and a hard place here, because we are required to have a joint election, correct? And if the city has now gone to four-year terms, and so every two years, we're not going to have anyone to have a joint election with. So either way we move, we got a legal issue.
Yes, in 2026, the city will not be having an election, they're having it now, the next one is in 2028.
You're the man.
Well, sir, the solution is, there really is no solution. I've spoken out loud with Texas Secretary of State Elections Office in-house legal counsel to confirm our interpretation of the statute. It is interpreted correctly. I was also a little bit surprised at the language. He said, "That's what it says." It says odd years in November. I did discuss the situation that we have here in Kingsville ISD. He also said, "Well, sir, that is what the statute said," and kind of repeated himself a little bit on that one. So do you have to have our joint elections? Do you have a statutory option of odd November elections? Moving either direction does not solve our issue, but it is an option available.
As far as election cost, Mr. Kufal, you're correct. Unless there is some other constitutional amendment going on, we would be alone. Now, I have gotten with the county, and they have told me that usually there is some type of constitutional amendment in November. Usually, they have something that we could piggyback off of to save cost savings, like when we get to the special meeting and we have the contract with Clayburn County, we are going to be splitting the cost for that election because they have constitutional amendments, 17 as a matter of fact, going on. But even if they only had one constitutional amendment, we would piggyback and be able to save cost. And not only cost, but we would be able to save also time and manpower, because they're going to be the ones securing all of the judges and the clerks, they're going to be the ones that are taking care of the applications for ballots by mail and everything, and the voting machines and everything behind the scenes. So, but you're right, if there is a situation where they're not, then we would be all alone as well.
As it stands right now, our election is set for May 2026.
Yes, sir.
No one else has an election in May of 2026. How do we pull that off?
We don't. We've come into this issue before, and again, I have sought the guidance of the Elections Department and the Secretary of State. The law as written doesn't give us options for not holding a joint election. In this case, we do ask to hold a joint election. Consultation with myself and the board at the time, we decided to pursue an election, but it would begin to be a lesser violation to not hold a joint election versus postpone an election, which would be much more, maybe a previous violation of the laws of the state of Texas. So in this case, if we were to change, and there is an election in November of '27, we would be short-term avoiding our May '26 problem of joint election. But that doesn't mean we'd be preventing another future problem. That's been an ongoing issue here in Kingsville that we have to address.
We do have to make a decision by the end of December, so I can continue to bring this back at another workshop for later time with more information, although I don't know what information we would be able to bring at that time, we might be in the same standstill.
Luke, have you discussed this with anyone? Do you know what other school districts are doing who may be in the same situation?
I have not worked with a school district that did not have enough entities around it to have a joint election season. I have worked with districts that changed their election for reasons like this, to make it easier, or really relying on other local and state elections. But this has been, like, unique in case of personal question to me if we're here in Kingsville, and I was not able to ask, or, I'm sorry, when I did ask, they were unable to find other cases like yours at the Department of Elections as well. So it's fairly unique.
Okay, throw this out the window. And suppose that we just, this one day, wanted to change our elections from May to November, and we opted, we were proposing to do that in even number of years, so that we were sure that there would be a November election. How would we, absent this legislative bill, how would we go about doing it?
We currently cannot change our election month-wise. We're trying to change it to a November even year election.
Yes.
We currently cannot do that. There was a change just like this one from the, I'll just leave it a session, that allowed that change years back. It has a sunset provision in it, and it just happens.
I really think they made a mistake, and I think they're going to correct this in the next session, because this isn't, this is, it's just goofy.
I think there was certainly some legal gymnastics going on, or legislative gymnastics in drafting of this bill, and as a end result, out of the sausage shop, we have the resulting package right, but all parties agree the language, as we are interpreting it, we're way too interpret it. I wouldn't be surprised if they revisited, but typically, it's several years in between each of these provisions allowing change. The last one's maybe 2014.
Thank you, Dr. Pitts. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item is 5E, HM King ECH to PTEC, Mrs. Flowers.
Good evening, Board President and Board Members, and Dr. Martinez. I'm here as the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction with Ms. Jennifer Flowers, who will present to you the transition, the proposed transition to early college high school, from early college high school to PTEC.
Good evening. Thank you for the introduction. So we are just going to present some information just for your consideration in a transition from an ECHS to a PTEC at HM King High School. So for starters, PTEC, that's our pathways and technology, early college high school. It's going to integrate our high school curriculum, college, and career prep into one program. Some of the key features, it aligns a little bit more with what our current curriculum is at the high school in terms of offering those industry-based certifications for our students. It still allows our students that opportunity to earn an associate's degree. There is more of an emphasis on career-aligned pathways and CTE. And then it's going to have some structured work-based learning opportunities as well. So rationale for this possible transition. So our curriculum currently aligns a little bit better with the state outcome-based measures for PTEC, and we do need to meet these outcome-based measures. There's access, achievement, and attainment. It expands a little bit beyond the ECHS model, and it embeds career readiness and industry certifications in the program itself. And then it's going to enable us to strengthen our ability to meet these designations, just because our curriculum does align a little bit better with PTEC. So bear with me, I know some of these slides have a lot of information, and again, just for your consideration. So these annual performance targets, so our campus does need to meet these outcome-based measures, so there's access, which is ensuring our students have equal enrollment opportunities in the program. There's achievement, so demonstrating that strong academic performance, and then attainment, so delivering college credit and credentials that lead to that post-secondary success. If we do not meet these targets, we will need, like, we do need to send our credentials to the state at the end of the year in order to maintain these designations. If we do not meet these outcome-based measures, we'll have to come up with a plan, kind of like a school improvement plan, in order to make sure that we are going to meet them in the future. Is the plan going to go into effect right now? No, so this would be something that we apply for, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Osipino and Ms. Moore, it's a four-year transition plan, because we do need to graduate our students that are currently enrolled in ECHS, and then our incoming class would be PTEC. So we don't leave our kids high and dry, right? We're ready to transition them into this new program, if that's what y'all see fit. So our first outcome-based measure is access, and the targets are the same for both ECHS and PTEC, so this would not change if we move forward with this program. We must meet the at-risk and economically disadvantaged targets. Our at-risk students, we can have no more than 25% under the district percentage, and as far as our economically disadvantaged students that are enrolled in the program, we can be no more than 10% under that district percentage. And in terms of our real-time data for the students that we have, we can look at the class of 2029. The students that we have currently coded at-risk that are enrolled in the ECHS program, 63% of them are voted at-risk. And in terms of our TAPER report for 2324, our at-risk percentage was 71.9, so we are well within that 25%. We have 85% of our students coded economically disadvantaged in the class of 2029 that are enrolled in ECHS. And according to our TAPER report in 2324, our district percentage was at 78.1, so we are within that, both, again, for ECHS and PTEC, are the same for that access target. So I do want to apologize, members of the board. I did change the format of this a little bit, just to make it look a little different. The information is exactly the same on the slides that you have, but I apologize, I should have had the insight to do this before I submitted it to you last week. These are six achievement targets that we must meet. We have to meet three out of these six for the achievement outcome-based measure. So they look at our Alderone EOC, they look at our English II EOC, and our TSI II score. And you can see 70% of students hitting that approach by the end of ninth grade for Alderone, 70% hitting that approach by the end of 11th grade, and then 60% of our students are hitting that TSI score by the end of 11th grade in math. And here's the other three questions. Yes, sir?
So you've got an implementation process, basically four years. You've got an implementation process that's going to take basically four years. So do you have five years to reach this 70%?
So this is going to go by their graduating class and this cohort, so the cohort is going to move along. So the ninth graders now, they need to meet certain targets by ninth grade, they need to meet certain targets by 11th grade.
All right, but it would be like, if Magic One, all approved, we start this next year, we're not saying that 90% or 70% of... We're not saying that 90% or 70% of the ninth graders have to reach approaches by the end of next year.
So we're, we're just looking at our students enrolled in ECHS, so it's not in total of our ninth graders. So just the students that are enrolled in ECHS because they're the ones that are helping us to meet those designations with the state.
All right.
Okay, but as those, those, those ninth graders, so for TSI, they have until 11th grade. And we want 70% of them by the time they reach 11th grade to hit that specific target.
How realistic is that? Where we are now?
Yes, and I, I have those numbers for you. So let's, let's go through some real-time data and then I think maybe we can have, have some clarifying questions here. So we're going to look at our class of 2026 and, and that's our senior, senior class. So our Algebra I EOC, we needed 70% of those students enrolled in ECHS to hit that approaches by ninth grade. And we had 80%. So we did hit that one. English II EOC, we needed 70% to hit that approaches grade level by the end of 11th grade. We were at 95%. And then our TSI, we did not meet that target, so we were at 24% and we needed 60, and that's in math. And then of the other three targets, there are six in total and we need to meet three of them. So our TSI in reading, we need 70%, our class of 2026 is at 32%. Our high school graduation rate, so we need to be within 5% of the statewide four-year graduation rate. According to the TAPER report in 2324, we were at 82.7 and the statewide four-year rate was 90.3. Historically, we have seen an increase in our graduation rate over the last three years. And I, I believe we talked about that the last workshop with our accountability scores. And obviously, our class of 2026 is yet to be determined. And in terms of our college readiness, so that's our TSI criteria in math and reading. As per the CCMR definition, we need 40% and we were at 16. So I will tell you, our ECHS designation, we did not meet the achievement outcome-based measure. So that, we, we didn't meet three out of those six.
Does this mean that all students that, that pass all the parts of the start test, does this exclude the ones that go to committee and then are graduated and pass the decision process?
I, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I can get you that answer.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Hang on, sir, Ms. Moore. Ms. Moore has the answer to your question. So it does exclude them. It does not?
They're included.
They're excluded.
Excluded.
Yes, sir.
So do, do we know more that's how many we had last year? That's one committee, under 30 maybe or?
I can, if you give me a second, I can pull that data and give it to you.
Yeah, I'm just, just wondering.
Okay, I can pull for you.
All right.
Mr. Kufal, did that clear up your question?
Yes.
Thanks, sir. Okay, so we're going to go over some theoretical data. So if we were trying to reach that PTEC in achievement, right? So this is that one outcome-based measure achievement. And if the, if we were designated as PTEC, where, where we would be. So these are the six things that we would need to hit, right? So again, it's going to look at that Algebra I EOC, English II EOC, that college readiness, TSI II score. It's going to look at that high school graduation rate. And it's going to look at our CTE program status by the end of 11th grade and then by graduation. So those are those two right there that do align a little bit more with the curriculum that we offer. We are a CTE heavy program and this would help us meet those measures just be, just because of what we offer already at our high school.
We're way over on our CTE, I would think, with everything we offer.
Yes, so, and, and we'll go over these here right now. So our Algebra I EOC, again, our class of 26 would hit, hit that. Same with our English II, right? Same data. We would not have hit that college readiness in math and ELAR.
By graduation, except.
Yes, yes, and that is by graduation. This is current data. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Oscevedo. Our high school graduation rate, you know, same, same data that we had with our ECHS. So that 82.7 is from our, our last paper and then 90.3 is that statewide four-year average. And then our CTE program status by 11th grade. So our, our class of 2026 was at 50%. We would have needed 55%, so pretty, pretty close on that one specific target. But our 65% by, by the time they hit graduation, obviously, we're, we're not quite there yet. But these kids need to make it from 50 to 65%. So we can, we can say our preliminary data, we'll probably have the completer status is approximately going to be about 80%. Questions on this? Because I know, I mean, this is all hypothetical targets here. And then that last outcome-based measure is attainment. So both for ECHS and PTEC, they would need to hit three out of these targets in order to meet that outcome-based measure in attainment. So earning, earning nine college credits by the end of 10th grade. 40% of our students earning that ELA or math college credit by the end of 11th grade. And that does tie into TSI scores as well because they do need that in order to enroll in those ELA and math college courses. Earn 15 college credits by the time, or 50% of our students, excuse me, earn 15 college credits by graduation. 50% of our students achieve core completion by graduation. 50% of our students earn an associate's degree by graduation. And 75% remain enrolled in that ECHS program. So those are those six targets that we would need to meet three of those.
So if our student can pass the PSI in the summer coming from eighth grade into freshman, that would help us a lot there.
Yes, sir, and then they would be able to enroll in some of those English and math courses at the college level as well. So this is our, our data for the class of 2026. So we had 37% of our students earned nine college credits by the end of 10th grade. 21% earned that ELA or math college credit by the end of 11th grade. Again, goes back to those TSI scores. And then our 26% of our students earned 15 college credits by graduation. But of course, we're not, we're not quite at graduation yet, so we do have some time left on that one. 3% of our students are hitting that core completion. And then our, our target for an associate degree. So I think we have roughly 10 students that are looking to get their associate's degree by the time the school year is over. Unfortunately, not all of them are in the ECHS program. So not even all of those 10 students are going to impact our target on this. And then persistence, so 75% of our students enrolled remain in that program through graduation. So again, that's where we're at now. And then we can do those theoretical PTEC attainment targets. So for PTEC, we would need 50% of our students to earn three college credits by the end of 10th grade. We would need 40% of our students to earn nine college credits by graduation. And then 40% of our students to earn 15 college credits by graduation. And then our other three, so we can have our 50, 30% of our students earn an associate's degree or Level One or Level Two certificate by graduation. 50% of our students earn an industry-based certification by graduation. And then with that persistence to staying in that program, 75% of our students enrolled in PTEC would remain in that program through graduation. So some of our theoretical data. So our class of 2026, 61% would have earned that, those three college credits by the end of 10th grade. 42% would earn nine college credits by graduation. And 26% would have earned 15 college credits by graduation. But again, we're not quite at graduation, so we have some time to boost that number. So our, our target for earning those associate's degree and those Level One and Level Two certificates, again, we, we don't have all of that information yet, but we're looking at about 10, 10 students earning that associate's degree. And then our industry-based certification, I believe we're on target to hit about 50% of those students enrolled. And then obviously, we can't really give you too much persistence data since we have no students currently enrolled in PTEC. So I know Ms. Williams did pass out a handout to you. It is a map of Region Two. And then it's also a list of schools in Region Two and the programs that they offer. So you can see the majority of the schools, districts in Region Two have moved to a PTEC program. Those that are blue on, on your sheet, they're in a multiple program year. And that's because they're transitioning from an ECH, ECHS model to a PTEC model. And then you can see at the very bottom on the list, there's the, I think there's about six schools still on there that are ECHS and ourselves included. So again, this is just some information for consideration. If, if we want to move forward with this, there is, there's a process. And I believe November 21st, I think it's on my paper, November 21st is the deadline to submit this application to be a PTEC designated campus.
I believe you just filled and read through November's thousand.
So I, I'm not sure, so there, there's two different ways they could have done it. So if they could have applied for both and still be doing both, they could have switched over previously. And now they no, no longer even have ECHS to offer. I don't have specific information on when they did it, but I do know that those are all, those schools in our region that I can pull up and, and where they're at in their program.
Thank you.
Ms. Flowers? Yes, sir.
So just happen to go here, let's say for example, we adopt PTEC. What happens if we don't meet our requirements? I mean, do we put on the support accreditation or how long do we have? How long would it give the opportunity to continue PTEC?
So if we don't meet those outcome-based measures, we do have to give the state a plan. So I know currently, we did not meet our outcome-based measures. We need two out of the three, so out of access, achievement and attainment. We, we need two out of those three. We only met one. So our, we do have a plan and I know Mr. Oscevedo has been working diligently. The, the plan is based on just, just better tracking. So making sure we know who's in what program and, and what they need in order to complete either their pathway or associate's degree or things like that. And then we do have to reapply yearly for these designations.
Dr. Walsh, the condition that we are in?
Yes, sir.
Alice or Dr. Martinez, what do you, what do you all suggest or recommend? What do you all, what do y'all thoughts about?
So looking at, excuse me, looking at what they offer at the high school. It is, it is, as Ms. Flowers said, already better suited for the PTEC program because it aligns with what they're doing more so than early college high school. It also will afford us the opportunity to get more students, I think, overall, access to college courses, whether or not they finish an associate or not. But they will have college courses as well as an industry-based certification coming out. And one of the things I wanted to add in reaching these goals are, as you are aware, we are pushing down some of, some CTE courses, current CTE courses, down to the middle, the middle schools, which will again, increase those numbers of, of students being able to reach these target goals. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, PTEC standing for pathways in technology. You know, it seems that sometimes there's trends, you know, things, you know, more students wanting to, you know, you know, learn different, different types of, like in this case, you know, industry-based certifications, things like that. But my question would be, you know, let's say that for some reason you have the trend then students wanting more, you know, academic type certificates or, or associate's degree programs. Does that hurt us or does that, is that part of that, these percentages like the 30%, the 50%, it's 75%? Or the only way to count them is they have to be technology-based certifications? I guess my question.
So the, the programs that we, the college courses and dual credit that we offer currently will still be available to the students. And earning an associate's degree is still a pathway that these students can take. So we are not hindering their ability to do any of the things they are currently doing in terms of their dual, dual credit classes or earning that associate's. This, I mean, I, I'm kind of thinking of it, you know, in terms of, of sports. And I, I know you all know what my family thinks in terms of sports. So if, if we are training a student on, you know, cross-country and then we go measure them on how fast they can run 100, well, we're not, we're not measuring them on what they can do best. So if our students and our curriculum are better aligned to these targets, then, then this may be the path, you know, that, that we need to take. But it, it, this is, this is what we offer and, and our students seem interested. And again, as Dr. Walsh said, we're, we're even pushing, pushing these programs down to the middle school. And I mean, our, our students are excited. I know, I mean, Dr. Y can probably attest to that. I mean, the, the programs are rolling and, and they're, they're doing well.
So, so I'm not, I'm not questioning the, you know, where we are now. But my, my, my question is, if students want to obtain an, an academic associate degree, does that help us reach these targets? Or, so meaning, let's say I go and I get a, I don't want to do a bachelor's in, or, or BB, business, right? Business, is that going to help us reach these percentages? That's just my question.
I, I believe it will, sir, in, in large part because again, as I said, I think we will increase access to students. So many students may join it, not necessarily with the intent in the beginning of getting an associate's degree. But because they get into the program, they get exposed to it, they will have the opportunity to not only get an IBC, as I said, but continue forward and earn an associate's along with an IBC, industry-based certification.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Moore, give you an example.
So for example, the 10 graduates that are, are going to graduate with their associate's degrees, if everything goes as planned, not all 10 of those are in the early college for different reasons. They weren't here their eighth grade year transitioning to their ninth grade year. But they are obtaining, or, you know, going to graduate. So in the PTEC model, those students we would receive the credit for. Where in the early college model that we're in now, only if they have been part of the early college program from eighth grade when they transition to ninth grade, do we reach that. Right? So that's just one example of what this year, our 10 grads.
And Board Members, if I may add to the particular summary. If you compare the early college with the PTEC, the, one of the main differences between the two is that the early college is more focused on college-driven careers. That is the main focus, right? To get kids to get an associate's degree on a pathway to college. The PTEC expands that horizon to students who still want that career track, I mean, that college track into, you know, different area. But in addition to that, it equates students to career and technical opportunities, internships, industry-based certifications that otherwise we may, we offer, but they are outside of just going of this type of program where we track the students and they follow a specific cohort, et cetera. So in instances, we go from single-minded, if you will, that might not be the right term, but single-minded college track to a more, there's a diversity of things that they need to. Colleges want them, industry certifications, other career technical exposure to different. to different areas. P-Tech allows us the opportunity to do that. That's why so many districts aren't moving into that, because it expands the opportunity for students.
We're already doing it, and we're just going to be measured on what we're doing. Now, I take it this is an application process?
So the application process, we have to do either for early college or P-Tech. And so last year, we went ahead and continued what we had this year. That's why we're bringing it to the table, because we need to submit by November 21st, the P-Tech route for the early college. Now, we'll continue early college for the next four years to phase it out, and we'll start planning the year if we get accepted for the P-Tech and move forward like that.
Will the fact that we have not met our targets under early college high school affect our application for the P-Tech?
No, sir, we did ask those questions when we met with our individuals last year, because the data is lacking, so all of this data was from the previous year, not last year, but the year before. We already started to increase our TSI and all of those different measures for this last year. And so, no, it will not affect it.
I like the exposure that Ms. Flowers was talking about at the junior high level, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
You use the example of sports. A lot of kids during middle school try out every sport. But yeah, when they get to the high school, they're looking at what they're better at. So P-Tech, I think, is something that we need to look at, and exposure in the middle school level would be ideal.
Yes, sir.
Just as Ms. Flowers mentioned, that is something that we're seeing with our eighth graders. They're getting the opportunity to look at the different pathways that are available to them because they're taking the Principles of Pathways class. And so what they're doing is they're talking amongst themselves. So early on, even though some of them had already chosen the particular pathway, they were like, wait a minute, I think I want to do this other. And so, excuse me, so they're already having those conversations amongst themselves with their parents, and they're really looking at where they want to focus, you know, their pathway. And we've explained to them, just like the HMK, you know, shared with us, that right now is the time for them to make that decision, to change from the pathway that they've chosen to another one. Because once they get to high school, they can't make another change, right? They can make one more, they can make one more change. And so that's giving them that opportunity to explore even further the different pathways. Yes, sir. I mean, we have young ladies who are, I'm not even going to know what that, it's a tool, and they were taking the lug nuts off of a tire, and they were changing a tire. They were learning how to change a tire, they were auto mechanics. I mean, in eighth grade, and all of those experiences that are being offered to them and they're being exposed to, you can't beat that.
And I, if I may also add for the board members, we do recognize that moving from early college high school to P-Tech is not in itself the solution, right? We still have to work on improving the learning environment, the rigor, the, you know, our instructional, yes, everything, right? But, so I don't want to hear that we're moving from this because now this seems easier, because that was the first question that I asked. Why are we moving this? Like, why are we doing this because we couldn't meet the standards, the high standards for early college? And if P-Tech seems more attainable. But when you, our expectation for all of us is that we are going to improve academics at the high school, regardless of which model we offer. So our students are fully prepared for college, career, military, whatever they choose. So that goes without saying that we're not putting that at risk. We are going to continue to work hard to increase our learning environment in academics.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item is five F, 2025, 2026, B-O-Y benchmark data, Mrs. Tanya Williams.
Yes, again, here with Ms. Williams, and we'll present the data for BYU this year.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Martinez. As Dr. Walsh stated, we are going to be going over our beginning-of-year data for our individual campuses, district as a whole. Give some time for the presentation to get on the screen. Alrighty, so we're going to go ahead and go over our beginning-of-year data. This test was given to our students on the fourth instructional week of the school year. We gave them the 2025 release star. So the presentation will provide you an overview of the results of this benchmark. As we move into the school year, the data presented gave us a guide for our instructional planning. It identified areas of strength and highlighted opportunities for targeted support. As we run through this data, it is going to be presented to you in a few different ways. You will first see percentages with numbers. The next slides, you will also see bar graphs. The bar graphs are only going to include the approaches, meets, and masters categories because those are the ones that are included in the calculation of our accountability. Now, when looking at these numbers, please keep in mind that we did begin with the end in mind. So we gave them a full 2025 release star. Several of these TEACs had not yet been taught. However, we wanted to give ourselves a baseline to see the work that needed to be done to meet that end goal. Also, when looking at the percentages, some of you may be thinking, hey, these calculate to over a hundred percent. Ideally, the percentages that you want is three hundred because the approaches, meets, and masters categories scaffold upon each other. Okay, so for example, if you look at the district averages, if you look at our did-not-meet, we're at seventy-six percent. In our approaches categories, we're at twenty-four percent. Six percent out of that twenty-four percent moved on to our meets category. One percent out of that six percent moved on to our masters category. So therefore, the percentages in whole will calculate to over a hundred percent. As you see, that is a trend that we are currently seeing across the district, is the majority of our students currently are falling under our did-not-meet and approaches categories. Yes, sir.
But this was on material, the fact they haven't even learned yet.
Correct, correct. We did give them the 2025 release star, so beginning with the end goal in mind, right? Where are our kids currently at, and where do we need to get them by the end of the school year? So this is the data that you just saw on the previous slide. However, as stated, this is only including the approaches, meets, and masters categories. Since these are the ones that are used to calculate our accountability ratings, these are the ones that we are focusing on. The numbers that you are seeing are the percentages. Looking at our third-grade math, we are seeing the same trend where the majority of our students are falling within those first two categories. Now, when it does come to our math, we are in the first-year implementation of our Blue Bonnet curriculum. And so we are seeing a little bit of a hiccup here. However, we are getting a lot of support directly from the Blue Bonnet vendors that are coming to the campuses, doing instructional walks with the campus administration, as well as the curriculum and instruction team providing those debriefs and with strategies to improve our Tier One instruction. And I do know, please stop me at any time with any questions, there is a lot of numbers, a lot of data. If you have any outlying questions, please let me know. Looking at our fourth-grade reading, we are seeing a lot of bright spots, right? Fourth-grade reading, the majority of our students are falling in approaches. And as Mr. Cooper stated, this is based off of information that they have not yet been introduced to. So we are starting with a strong baseline. Fourth-grade math, same as third grade, we are implementing Blue Bonnet. Those same instructional walks are occurring with this grade level as well, and those debrief meetings happening with the campus administration and with the CNI team. The campus administration is then turning that around to their teachers. Fifth-grade reading, huge bright spot here. As we stated, these students have not been yet introduced to this information, yet we have pretty much around twenty percent across the board already hitting our meets category. So that is a huge bright spot for us. And knowing that the work that needs to be done by the end of the year, several of our students are already at that level to where we just need to strengthen their understanding of that content. Fifth-grade math, we're seeing the same trend as the two prior grade levels. Fifth-grade science, we are also seeing our, the majority of our students are falling within those first two categories. Now, with our fifth graders, this is the first time in which they have tested in this content area. Now, they do have unit assessments, things of that nature, but this is the first time that they see a star test in this content specific to science. Now, we went ahead and went over overview of district with the individual campuses. This is going to be the same data, but campus-specific, so we can see how each campus is standing within these star scores. So first campus up is Harrell. As we saw with reading, fourth grade and fifth grade, twenty percent are already hitting that meets category. Okay, so we do have a good baseline there. Harvey, the data summarized there for that campus as well. And the same with Venice. Moving on to our middle school, you will not see a district summary with the middle school because they are our only middle school. If you see any outlying questions, anything that piques your attention, please let me know. And we're seeing basically the same trends. Our kids starting where they are and within those first two categories. Moving on to our high school, we are also seeing, as, you know, prior, the same scores there. There is on our Algebra One. If you notice, there is one thing that I did want to point out, and, you know, I would like to give kudos to Ms. Moore, is if you see the total number of students, you do see that it is a very high number of students there. And the reason for that is because not only did she encourage for us to test all the ninth graders, but that also includes all of our retesters that are currently enrolled in algebraic reasoning and our college prep students in preparation for TSI. So we were able to get a baseline on all of those students. Next steps moving forward, we have analyzed the BOY data with most students performing in the did-not-meet and approaches categories. Principals are working with teachers to break down the results and identify any priority areas for improvement. We are optimizing schedules for instructional planning, adjusting grade-level structures to provide teachers with a dedicated PLC time for data analysis and instructional planning. And we are strengthening our curriculum and resources, identifying the areas of support to enhance planning, lesson internalization, instructional practices, and maximizing the use of our current instructional resources. As always, our focus remains on strengthening the Tier One instruction, providing targeted support, and improving our student outcomes. Any questions?
Is this in any way, as far as the teacher incentive allotment incentive? Is this a start this year for that, to see improvement?
So the teacher incentive allotment, we chose star to star. So it's last year's star based on this year's current star. So this right here gives us a baseline. Now, with this BOY assessment, the two areas that we did have to test in order to meet the requirements of the TIA allotment was our fifth-grade science and our eighth-grade social studies and science, and they don't have a end-of-year star for that one. So we did have to test those, which is also why we chose to use the 2025 release star. Yes, sir.
What's the plan for, you don't want to test after test after test after test? Going forward this year, when's the next true assessment?
We have our middle-of-year benchmark. Any further questions from the board? Yes, sir.
The middle of the year?
Yes.
Can you give, what are they going to be basing it on, curriculum or TEACs or what?
Yes, sir, so our middle-of-the-year is also a release star to do that. Now, prior in-between our benchmarks, we do do our unit assessments so we can still track the progress of the content and which the students have been exposed to at that time. But this one, we did want to get a good baseline, just to have, like I said, keep that end goal in mind and the work that needs to be done to get them to that goal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Okay, before we go into the special meeting part, I would like to take a five-minute quick break, please.
Item number six, Kingsville ID Board President will conduct a special meeting. Item six A, communication from administration, superintendents update, Dr. Martinez.
Good evening, board members. Let me start by saying that we are working on our school improvement plan. We are restructuring our POCs at the middle school and high school. And of course, we're increasing the coaching support at the campuses, working with the principals on that plan. We're also working on developing the tip and the plan, which are required documents we have to submit to TIA outlining our plan for school improvement. So our team has met several times with principals and we are in the process of meeting those requirements. Just a reminder for everyone out there that the end of the first nine weeks is this Friday. So on Monday, we will be issuing report cards. Please, parents review that with your children and reach out to teachers so that we can support the education of your children. We also have on Monday, the 13th at 6:00 PM at the High School Dome, the town hall meeting to talk about the voter approved tax verification election. Dr. Pitt is going to be presenting information to inform staff and community members on the purpose of this election. We are also working on updating the website, which we recognize is very outdated. So we, we are hoping to finish this by October 31st. I invite everyone to attend the Hall of Fame at the high school on the 16th of October at 5:30 PM. And here's going to be a great event and we are excited about supporting that with the Education Foundation as well. That's all I have on my end. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martinez.
I was asking if we could move six F to executive?
Item six F, to executive? Okay. Does any board member oppose moving that item into closed session for discussion? All right, item six B, by common consent, the board agrees to consider as one action, item the following, approval of T test appraisal for the 2020, 2025, 2026 school year. Is there a motion to approve the T test appraisal for the 2025, 2026 school year as listed? Who's that? Moved by Jody Lewis? Second by Delma Salinas? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, do the same. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, item six C, discussion of possible action regarding the funding opportunity series for 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. We've already discussed this in the workshop. This resolution gives the district the authority to move forward if the conditions are set in the market. I would be working with our financial consultant and then I would give a recommendation to either the superintendent or the board president who make the the final approval. The redundancy gives, gives us the option of if one of them is out of pocket, that we would be able to do either or. I'll take any other questions that you have.
For our recommend, if you might, that parameters presented in the presentation portion to include that information or example so moved to include parameters as discussed in presentation.
I'm going to adopt this resolution as it's presented with the parameters discussed in the workshop being taken into advisement by the people we are giving authority to hold trigger.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Delma Salinas? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, do the same. Motion passes seven zero. Item six D, discussion of possible action regarding the joint elections contract with Clayford County. Dr. Pitt?
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. We are, again, are proposing a joint election where we do share the cost of the election. They are responsible for securing all the judges, making sure that all of the ballots by mail are taken care of, making sure that all of the election machines are ready to go. Although I am involved in the process, for instance, when they did testing of the election machines, I was present there to make sure that everything went smooth with the testing. And I will be there making rounds during early voting. I will also be there making rounds on election day. But again, the ones that are doing the lion's share of the work on those days are the, is Clayford County, the staff. The cost would be shared proportionally amongst us, again, depending on several things, depending on the cost of all the judges, the machines, and, and again, by proportional, it depends on, on the turnout as well, how many people are voting for us, how many people are voting for the county with the constitutional amendments. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Do you have any estimate?
Yes, the estimate would probably be around $12,000 that we would pay. Again, it all depends on several factors, participation. We don't expect to be nearly as high as it would be like in a November even number year or when there's a presidential election. So costs will be, will be less. But again, we still have to pay for the voting machines. We still have to pay for the clerks and the judges on election day as well.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the 2025 joint election service contract between Kingsville and the middle school district and Clayford County? Motion made by Markeen Chapa?
Second.
Second by David Garcia? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, do the same. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, item six D, discussion impossible, oh, sorry. First mistake of the night. Six E, discussion of possible action regarding the HM King drainage repairs change order.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. So this action item is no longer needed as now the change orders did not go over the 50,000 allowance included in the contract.
Does anything need to be said or?
No.
There's no action on items, on item six E, I'm sorry, yeah, six E. Okay. Item six F, going to be closed session. The board will enter into closed session in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.074 to deliberate and consider the following. Consider and deliberate regarding the employment of contracted personnel, assistant superintendent of support programs, seven B, consider and deliberate regarding the employment of contracted personnel, director of special ed, seven C, consultation with legal counsel regarding legal personnel matters. No action will be taken until we return to open session. We are entering closed session at 7:31 PM. No action will be taken until we return to open session. We are entering closed session at 7:31 PM.
[coughs]
We now return to open session and take necessary action on matters which the board may discuss in open session upon which action may be taken. We are returning to open session at eight thirty eight AM. Going back to item six F, discussion of possible action regarding the director of school improvement with classification and new position, Dr. Martinez. We're going to give their a motion to approve the director's school improvement classification. Eight B, discussion and possible action regarding employment of contracted personnel director of special ed. Is there a motion to approve the following contracted employee as presented director of special ed? Move by Mr. Garcia.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Salinas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do the same. Motion passes seven zero. Item eight A. Discussion and possible action regarding employment of contracted personnel assistant superintendent of support programs. There will be no action taken on that item. Eight B, discussion and possible action regarding employment of contracted personnel director of special ed. Is there a motion to approve the following contracted employee as presented director of special ed? Move by Mr. Garcia.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Salinas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say. Motion passes seven zero. There be no further action, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Vice President, I officially, if I may sir, want to trust you that any action on proposed agreement as discussed in the settlement. For on the eight C for legal personnel.
The one we just discussed.
Right.
In the additional two components to the already approved. I move that we approve the settlement. The negotiated settlement with the additional factors provided by our attorney in executive session.
You heard the motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Martine Chapal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. There be no further action? Can I do this sound like? No, it's okay. No, here.
Vice, is it possible to introduce our special ed?
Ms. Gloria Hamel, if you can please come to the front. It is my pleasure to introduce to you the new director of special ed, Ms. Gloria Hamel Garcia. In addition, I would like to congratulate Ms. Jennifer Flower as the new director of school improvement.
Great job.